Sorry to interrupt some great conversation going on. But will the, um, February 11th Dune City Council meeting please come to order? It is seven o'clock PM. And, um, Ms. Administrator, could we please get a roll call this evening?
Yes, Mayor Rebecca Reedy.
Here.
Council President Maury Sanders.
Here.
Councilor Ed Scarborough.
Here.
Councilor Dick Wells.
Here.
Councilor Sheldon Meyer.
Present.
And for the record, Councilor Platt is absent and excused, but I hope he'll be back. Thanks, ma'am.
Okay. Uh, when everyone present please rise with their political leaders.
What do we need to apply to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all?
Counselors, I would entertain a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
So moved. One second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approved tonight's agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Okay. Uh, counselors, I'll entertain a motion to approve tonight's consented agenda, which will include amended bills of the session.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve tonight's consent agenda as amended with the bills of the session. All those in favor in motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Alright, we're into announcements, agenda item number six. Uh, Dune City Budget Committee will meet on Tuesday, February 23rd, 2016, at four o'clock here in the city council chambers to review the budget versus actual for the first half of the fiscal year.
Are you okay with that date?
Absolutely.
Wonder at all.
Any counselors, uh, have a, uh, issue with that day? Okay. Um, and we do have some new, newly appointed budget committee members, so that's awesome. I know, we're just making our way there. Uh, we still meet, we still need many volunteers on various commissions and committees, but I, I must say that we are beginning to, um, complete some of our, uh, committees and commissions, and I, and I really appreciate the generosity of our citizens to step forward and help us. We, we really appreciate that, um, as this new year begins. City Hall will be closed on February 15th for Presidents' Day, and, uh, Happy Valentine's Day to everyone on the 14th, which is Sunday, so we'll put that out there. And, uh, final announcement, the Dune City Triathlon will be held May 7th, 2016. That's traditionally Mother's Day weekend. We're looking forward to, uh, sponsors and volunteers for the event, and, uh, once again, we'd like to thank our junior sponsor, the Three Burgers Casino, and, uh, being one of our major sponsors this year, so thank you goes out to them. Any further announcements that I haven't touched on? Um, is there a citizen input this evening?
No one has signed up, but you may ask.
And, so we'll move along to agenda item number eight, which is, um, new business, goals set by the city council. Um, there's a report right here. Uh, we held a, a, a city special session to, uh, reaffirm or, um, commit to goals, uh, for the 2016, uh, year, and our goals, you, we, do we have that posted on our website yet?
No, we don't, because you haven't voted on them yet.
Oh, right, okay, so we have, our, our goals, um, that we have stated here are, um, one, two, three, four, five. The first one being financial stability, the second one being good governance, the third one being water quality, and then, uh, the fourth one being emergency preparation, and then finally, um, number five would be economic development. And within those goals, there are, uh, you know, a number of itemized, um, sub-goals, I guess, that we would, uh, hope to accomplish. So it is now time for us, as a council, to, um, adopt these goals, so do we want to have a discussion on them, or do we wanna just, because we've had, um, quite a deal, quite a great deal of discussion during our meeting, special session, but, um, is there any council like to address any of these goals, or do you wanna change them, or just wanna adopt them?
I think we pretty much hashed through them during our special session.
We did, and it was a very good one, too.
I know that we approve our 2016 Dune City Goals Session.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve and adopt our 2016 Dune City Goals as presented, and we'd be happy to give a copy of these to our press if we need to do that. Um, any further discussion, counselors?
One minute's of the goal setting session available for the public.
Hmm. The draft is finished, but it hasn't been reviewed by the city administrator yet, so...
So they will be in your packets for the next regular session, for the minutes of this meeting.
Okay. Thank you, well, so we're actually probably really a step ahead by just getting these completed, aren't we? Any further discussion, counselors? Okay, and then, all those in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Okay, they are adopted. Thank you. Welcome, thank you.
To do this.
Um, new business item number B, scheduled annual expo, and I'm sure that our city administrator is looking for a, some direction in this regard, to hold our, uh, annual ex- expo or exposition.
What are you reading?
I'm reading, um, I don't know, let me see here. Two, Thursday, February 11th, 2016, new business, and then B, schedule expo.
Vice's annual financial report.
Oh, I wonder if I have one that maybe we deleted and...
Well, Toronto's has scheduled the annual expo, I know.
We don't have that.
Okay, well, alright, then.
Toronto's, someone else is gonna have to start doing it, huh?
How's that off? Okay. Uh, okay. Do I have a bad number two page? A.
And what's in mine is wrong here.
Well, we didn't approve this as part of the agenda.
That's true.
Okay.
It's not approved as part of the agenda.
So we can talk about it, it's just not mentioned.
This, well, it's not, it's, is it on the agenda or not?
It is on the agenda that got posted, apparently.
Maybe it was only on my agenda, it is.
There was an amended agenda that was sent out after the, after the first one.
Okay.
It was sent out in the electronic packet, so it was on the electronic packet, it's on what was posted. Somehow she grabbed the wrong one to make copies for the, the, pardon, copy packets, excuse me.
Okay, so, can we talk about this, or no? Don't?
Well, you can talk about it, or you can not talk about it, and we'll put it on next month. Doesn't matter to me, I just need a calendar.
We did, because I remember saying we approved, oh.
amended bills.
Okay.
Something was amended.
Um, it, it, it has been posted, but no, the county, Council Senator's is correct. He did not vote to approve that particular agenda, so we can put it on next month, it'll be fine, there's no big rush.
Right, okay. That's one skin, we'll just cross that out. Alright, annual financial report. There we have it.
Yes, I just gave it to you, I really don't have anything to say, other than, we didn't, there were no problems, other than recommendations on some changes, policy changes to the office procedures, that would help to alleviate some issues that we have dealt with in the recent past, and those have now been implemented, and, other than that, we got a good report, and, I'm thrilled, I wish we could.
Look for the song.
It was really nice. Councilor Sanders?
Yes. This is not an audit.
No.
It's just...
A compilation.
It's a review. And it's been, this is the fifth year of reviews, or the fourth year, and the next one coming up will be a full-blown audit.
It should be a full-blown audit. It's recommended that it be a full-blown audit, which means we'll have to lay off all staff. We'll look for ramp on it.
Can't we just bring all the money from the bank and put all the diamonds next to the grocery?
No, we're sure we can. Alright, um, any, for, we're gonna discuss this in great detail on our budget meeting, right?
Yes.
So...
Do we need to do a...
We don't need to do anything with this, do we?
No, it's more of an FYI thing, housekeeping thing.
Okay, um, policy two require boring under city roadways in certain circumstances.
I don't recall seeing that.
There was nothing in your packets about that.
Actually, there is in the road commission draft, and it only...
Yeah, there you go.
Into the detail that one would want.
Oh, okay.
Alright.
You got it, very detailed, with some recommendations.
Okay, do you wanna share with us what your committee's recommending?
Well, the city, the, the road commission is recommending that the city take action to, as a policy statement, to require boring under the road whenever possible. Um, and some ideas behind that to cover it were to obviously charge a, a fee for any cut made in the road, attach a one-year warranty requirement on all street utility cuts, so if a contractor makes a cut that they, when they replace the pavement, that they guarantee that that will not sink, where we have to go in and fix it. There would also be the requirement that a licensed contractor do the work, in other words, a citizen can't say, "I wanna cut a utility up there and put a full patch on and say, 'I did my job.'" Um, attach specifications to the permit that included inspections to be done before, to ensure that compaction is where it needs to be for the city, and to actually have inspections to where the specifications required, if it's a two-inch road base, a four-inch road base, are complied with, because what's happened in the past, contractors will just make the cut and pass it away, we don't know what has been done, and then we've had to go in and fix them. Another one was requiring warranty, I know that's kind of a dangerous word to say, but the idea was, if that road is newly paved, story sealed, whatever, put a three-year warranty, that no one's gonna cut in that roadway for at least three years, something like that. Uh, require a street, uh, cut permit to be anywhere between $450 to $800 per cut. Uh, install a pipe down the side of the paved street, outside of the paved portion, portion of the right-of-way, in other words, in the city's right-of-way, we can issue the permit for them to lay pipe in that area and not disturb our pavement. Have the people post a bond for each project, so that if they don't complete it, or complete it satisfactorily, we have the money in the bond to patch and repair it. Well, we can require, uh, that part of that road cut fee could be designated to the road fund itself for use in meetings in the roads. And establish, uh, the parameters of the utility cut fee system that would generate revenue for the road fund, so that there's a small stream of money coming in, go out and take care of the problems that we've had to take care of, that we haven't had the money to do, and it's just eaten into our savings. And make sure that if the road sinks after a contract works done, that the contractor loses their responsibility to fix it, if they don't have legal recourse for it.
Like for a period of three years, or five years, or...
Whatever we wanna designate, but that's what the road commission is saying to the council. We may not, if, you may not, if, you may not get away with boring, that may weaken the roadway itself, but at least it's a, it's a, it's a place to start, to keep the road from getting cut, 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 cut. Now, I know this is a lot to throw at the council like this, because it's kinda like the cart before the horse, we'll get into the road commission report in this item, but I would ask that this body send it back to the road commission and, and, and just bless it and say, "Bring us back some detailed recommendations," because we, as the council, want to adopt a boring-only policy, or a boring is the primary choice policy. You can even send it back saying that we like two sets of fees, that they'll, you know, reduce the fee if there's a board versus a street cut, things like that. The commission's saying to the council, "This is what we see as a problem, these are the recommendations, all are in part, or partial, tell us what you want us to do." So, that's why it's here before the council, and now we have to throw it back at them with specific direction. Hope that's sufficient.
Very good.
What's the pleasure of the council? We've, we've read all this, it's very comprehensive, I think.
I like the suggestion from the road committee to have, uh, separate fees for a bore and a cut with incentive on the bore, I think that'd be good. I think less have, have damage to the road with a bore. Still could, but it's less likely to happen, I think.
What do you think?
Yeah, I, I was, since our last meeting, I have talked to a friend, a contractor, and they do boring, and, um, for small water lines, he said it's, it's really easy, you just run a two-inch line, bore through there, and the cost is real minimal, and so, even with the, the potential impact of a bore, if you just put a single water line underneath the road, I mean, I don't think there'd be any impact at all, just a two-inch water line. But the main thing is just to try to eliminate all those cuts after the roads have been repaired.
I think, well, especially on the new paved road, uh, three to five year, whatever the road commission is buying.
I would suggest we send it back with the specific instructions of the two-tiered fee schedule, and implement these items with some specific language.
Well, would it be, um, advantageous to make, uh, adopt a policy that is centered around boring rather than cutting, and then make what, all of these provisions, you know, uh, an exception to the...
I think a policy statement would be very well-received by the road commission, that says it shall be the policy of the city of Dune City, that boring is, is...
Desired.
Is preferential, rather than cutting into our roadways to preserve our roadway, our roadway system. And, send it back to the road commission, and let's put together a nice package in two, three, or four months, and get it back to the council for the appropriate, you know, structure. I think it would, it would probably have to be an ordinance if we're talking fees. So, you know, we'd have to get the information together, have the council bless, then bless it, then go to the ordinance, review to prepare the ordinance, and make it happen, but at least it'll let the public know that, "Don't come to us and wanna cut the pavement without, you know..."
Read this, at least read this.
That would be helpful.
Um, will, need a motion, or more comments?
Well, I would, I'd like to have something, maybe, that the road commission look at to add, what we do in case we get some kind of a contractor that comes out that doesn't know the rules, and without any permits, cuts into the road, or, I mean, I've personal experience where they've been on a city street, a private business, they came and they bored like a 12-inch hole, just through the asphalt, to get to cable lines, no one knew about it till after it was done, and then they just cold patched it back, so I think the road commission might wanna look at...
We already have that in place, where, uh, two, three years ago, we had a person run a heavy-duty tractor alongside the roadway and break it off, and they were required to go back and patch and repair in lieu of, I think there was a fine involved in it that they agreed to pay to do the patch and repair. I think we already have language in the code that protects us from that, it's just, we need to, once we find out about it, it becomes a code enforcement issue to get out there, you know, the stop word, or stop work, and, I mean, if somebody cuts in our roads and does that, I think, personally, I think, other than being rude, I think that would have a pretty, have immediate fine to it, because, you know, it may seem minor if you, you know, patch and repair a smaller little pottle or something, people don't think of it, but when you get 20 of those things at 150 bucks a pot, that adds up.
The situation that Councilor Scarborough is talking about is probably associated with one of the entities that we have a franchise agreement with, and our franchise agreements do not address this issue. Um, we are currently in negotiations with Charter on a new franchise agreement, and I have instructed our attorneys to include provisions such as what the road commission has recommended. Um, I like now that we're gonna have some more detail, and I can give her more detail, so she can make sure, but the idea being that, part of the franchise is to give them the opportunity to run their facilities in our easements, and we won't bother them, you know, that's why they pay us the, the big bucks, so that they can do that without us on top of them. But, um, we need to make sure that our language in those agreements says, it's gotta be to Dune City Code, it's got to be, and right now, our code doesn't even address standards required for streets, so there, we're way behind the eight-bell on a lot of things, but just to let you know, at least on the Charter one, I've got the attorney working on it to change it.
The standard's always to the engineer's department, it's a city engineer, if someone wanted to come in and cut and patch.
Right, that's what it says, but it doesn't, you know, I, I, to me, it just seems to be a little more specific, but we'll see, we'll see what the language comes out to be.
Everybody participated in the recommendations, including the road commission, the planning commission even put it there, just a gesture, so, uh, it was truly a collaborative effort to get, to give you what you see in the draft minutes.
Okay. Well, we, we still, we need a motion to send this back to the road commission with that direction.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we, we mandate this back to the road commission to, um, be more specific with, uh, a policy and perhaps an ordinance, with the intentions of sin, of having it be an ordinance. Is that right? Is that good? Alright. Any further discussion on the motion that's on the table? Okay, hearing none, I'll call for the question, all those in favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Okay, there you go. Making some... Um, ordinance 231A, shared domestic water supply program, uh, first, first reading, this is, um, primarily an ordinance, it's a housekeeping ordinance that we've had before us on a number of occasions, and have looked at, amended, you know, revised, et cetera, and it's coming to us now, um, as a public hearing. So, I guess, we're gonna open the public hearing, unless, we discuss this first, Jamie? Does a discussion, as a council?
Will you start? You follow the script that I gave you.
I know, but right here, the ordinance says, "Discussion." So I guess we'll just go to the, pardon me?
If you follow the script, you will have discussion.
Yeah. Alright, so, um...
You open the public hearing first?
Okay. I'm not sure I said the right name.
No, do first reading first, I'm sorry, first reading first, I'm sorry.
So, um, a proposed ordinance requires two readings before it's enacted. The City Charter, section 34, 3, provides that both readings may be read by title only if, A, no council member present, the meeting requested to be read in full, or, B, if a copy of the ordinance is provided for each member, and all requirements for posting and advertisements have been met. Have all posting and advertisements been met? Ms. Mills?
Yes.
Okay. Does any counselor desire the ordinance to be read in full? Okay. Okay, um, I would entertain a motion to read the ordinance by title only.
So moved. Second.
I'll read the second, that we read it by title only. I will then read ordinance, uh, number 231A by title only.
Do we have to vote first, Mary?
If moved and seconded and a vote, oh, we do need to vote, okay. All those in favor of the motion to, um, read this ordinance by title only, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Okay, I will now read the ordinance, uh, 231 by title only. Thank you, Councilor President. Uh, ordinance 231A, an ordinance amending chapter 51 entitled Shared Domestic Water Right to the Dune City Code of Ordinances, repealing ordinance numbers 165 and 192, confirming the appeal of ordinance number 185, and other matters properly relating, relating thereto. I will now open this agenda item for public comment, it is 7:29 PM. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment, either for or against this ordinance? For or against this ordinance, okay. Hearing none, I will now close the public comment period at 7:30. Counselors, I would entertain the motions to change any language of the ordinance 231A as presented, if desired. Looks good, huh? If, uh, okay, there's no motion. I will entertain a motion to have the second reading of the ordinance, number 231A, by title only.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we now read, uh, ordinance 231A by title only for a second time. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Okay, that motion carries. Um, I will do a second reading now of ordinance number 231A by title only. Ordinance 231A, in ordinance, an ordinance amending chapter 51 entitled Shared Domestic Water Right to the Dune City Code of Ordinances, repealing ordinance numbers 165 and 192, confirming the appeal, confirming the repeal...
Oh, thank you.
Welcome. Of ordinance number 185 and other matters properly relating thereto. I will now entertain the motion, counselors, to accept the wording for ordinance number 231A as presented or amended. I will now entertain the motion.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we, um, adopt ordinance 231A. This requires a roll call vote. Ms. Mills?
Yes. Councilor Meyer?
Yes.
Councilor Wells?
Yes.
Councilor Sanders?
Yes.
Councilor Scarborough?
Yes.
Thank you.
The motion is...
The motion passes unanimously.
Ordinance 231A is hereby adopted... Ordinance 231A is hereby adopted and will become effective thirty days from today. Thank you, everyone. Unfinished old business, committee chair appointments. Unfinished old business. Okay, we have some. Okay, so we have Mr. Tom Mallon is applying to be city councilor, and...
Mayor. If I may, committee chair appointments.
I don't have anything known yet. Committee chair appointments?
Yeah. Who's going to serve as chairman of which committees?
No, no. I don't have anything in reference.
That's your decision, will you make a recommendation to council on whether Ed is still going to be barking or acting?
Oh, okay.
I'd like to...
Councilor Meyer?
It seems a bit premature to make committee chair appointments if we don't have a complete...
Council?
Council. The other thought that I've had, and I'd like to run by you, is that since we're moving, I think, a pretty good clip in terms of deciding what we're going to do about a city manager, city recorder, I would prefer that we waited to see who might be our city recorder and manager before we decide who we're going to fill the chairs up here with, because we might have someone that we want to bring back on, or that they might want to be the city councilor if they're not a... It just seems, again, like, I mean, I'm, we've been muddling along and I think doing a pretty good job, but are we being too quick in filling positions that might be better filled in a month or so? We're advertising for what, twenty days?
That's a good point.
I would hate to see us lose Jamie on two different accounts. I'm not suggesting that's going to happen, but I'm just putting that out for discussion right now, is this something that can wait another month and decide then after we have a little better idea of who's going to be our manager and administrator, and then how many positions do we have open, and then what do we want to do about that?
That's a good point. Councilor Sanders?
I agree with, with Councilor Meyer, I believe that instead of thirty days, I think sixty days would get this council the room to know exactly what we're doing with that city administrator, then we bring it back to the council and do that.
Okay.
I, I'm very much excited about people applying and wanting to be involved in that sort of stuff. I just, it just seems to me like we might be one step ahead of ourselves again.
So...
And I know, I don't think like other people do, but...
So is that a general consensus?
I think the part of it that rings with me is the idea of having a full council up to make this decision like I asked for, for two-two-eight, kind of runs on the same thing, having a full body with Councilor Platt back.
A fuller body.
A fuller body.
Okay, so you want to...
Mayor?
Well...
I would point out that the position that I resigned from expires this year anyway, and so, you know, you'd be looking at reelection in November anyway.
Whoever reappoints.
Or reelection. Or reelection, reelection or reelection.
Whatever.
Correct.
Well, it is also true that whoever we appoint is also going to be up for reelection.
Re-election, correct, exactly.
Actually, you know, thinking about it, I, with that input, I could see that we could go ahead and fill the council. I don't think things...
What do you think?
If, if, if whoever is appointed now is going to have to run in November, then maybe that would take care of the issues that I had.
Okay, so, so we know that it's, we know that when someone's appointed to fill a term, a vacancy, their term expires at the next election, so at that, so at the very next election, so that election actually, the requirements for that election actually begin in the summer, folks, and I, I don't know when the, is it the...
August.
Voting officer, there's a deadline now, I think, like August seventeenth or fifteenth, where you must have your petitions signed and into the, into the budget, not the budget officer, what kind of officer is it?
Elections.
Elections officer, there you go. You have to have it into the elections officer, which happens to be the city recorder slash administrator, in our case, and it's, and it's due like in August fifteenth. So generally, what happens is the elections officer posts and promotes, I don't know if you like, send a news release to the various media stating that packets are not ready, because there's deadlines, Oregon states when you, you know, what's the earliest possible day you can have the packets available, and then the last possible day for turning them in, so just want to make everybody aware of that, there's a little process.
There's also there is the fact I've announced I'm going to sign reelection, and I don't know about Councilor Scarborough, so there will be two vacancies in a, if Ed decides not to run, there will be...
That's true. So what should we do? We've had two persons that are here willing to, Mr. Kenneth Peznell and Mr. Mallon, Thomas Mall, Tom Mallon has come in, and so, you know, they're, they're here this evening wanting to maybe like talk to us, I think we should just maybe do that.
Yeah, let's do it.
Let's do it. All right, I will call Mr. Mallon up to the podium to have comments, please.
Hearing good. Thank you all. My name is Tom Mallon, I'm trying to build a house on Willhink Lake. I have a real interest in the community that I live in for a reason. I'm retiring here, I think the quality of life is extremely important. As I get older, it gets more and more important, and quite honestly, I don't want that quality to go down. This is my last hurrah in life, so to speak, and I think there are a lot of people in this area in Dune City that feel the same way. So I don't want that jeopardized, I want this community to, to thrive and, and just not be beat up, and I've seen a lot of people in my career beat up by all kinds of other people, and I don't mean physically, but I mean by all kinds of stuff, and there's just no excuse for it. So I look forward to serving the, the people of Dune City.
Thank you, Mr. Mallon.
Any questions?
Any questions?
Thank you all.
Oh, sure. Appreciate your attending this evening. Mr. Kenneth Peznell, please come forward.
Wasn't prepared for this.
Supra.
Welcome to politics. My name is Ken Peznell, lived in Dune City now for four years, and served on the water quality committee with Jane, and departed that, I got involved back with the fire department for a year, but a shoulder injury sidelined me from that, so I decided to get back into this, and when I got the letter in the mail, I decided this would be a good chance to get back involved at a higher level, and honestly, I'm willing to do, participate in any of the other committees too, so, but I went for the big one first, so. My concerns having built here already are just, it's consistent to every person building in Dune City, all the rules are applied consistently, I, I sense that that's not always the case with water meters being one of the big ones. The other concern my wife and I both have is the, the state of the lakes in the area and the encroachment of the building around them. We had this discussion many times in the water quality committee, you know, about invasive species, and my theory all along has been the worst invasive species is us, and I, I look at the development around the lake isn't as controlled as I think it should be, and I'm not saying put more government into it, but I, I think enforce the rules as they are, we, we've just witnessed it in our own area where people just cut down every tree they want, and once they're cut down, it's a little too late to do anything about it, so, and this is something I brought up with the water quality needs too, and so, that's, love living here, it's a great place to live, and I want to help my community, I've always been involved in community services somehow or another.
Thank you. Any questions, counselors?
I have one. You, you have listed here a position, city council, and also the planning commission. Do you have a preference of which one of those you would rather fill?
No, I just, I figured I'd go after all of them, whatever you need, um, you know, pretty easy on that, so, I've got a lot of experience in planning and development in that type area on a small scale, I've built up three of my own houses, and so, have a little bit of insight into things like that.
Thanks, that might make it easier for us.
Makes it easier. Makes it easy for me.
I don't want to do a coin toss like they did last week in Iowa.
I'll, I'll take a coin toss.
A ping pong ball.
I'm in the gambling business, so...
Okay, thank you, thank you for coming in this evening, appreciate that too. Counselors, are you ready, I'm, are you ready to make a motion? You have a question?
Mr. Mallon, do you have any permits pending with the city, because I see that you have a lot as your address, you're building a house? Are you having permits currently in progress, or...
They're in progress, yes, sir. As far as I know, the builder's dealing with that.
Are you ready, counselors?
Well, the only thing I can say is I'm gonna, I'm gonna take advantage of Ken Peznell, because he's got on his, he's willing to go on planning commission and budget committee, so he kind of shot himself in the foot there, I would just put him, I'd put him on the budget committee and fill that slot, that's how my mind works.
Okay, so do you want to make a motion to that effect?
You're not on the budget committee for the city council, but that...
Right, city council.
I'll, I'll make a motion if you don't want to.
I know that Tom Mallon would be appointed to the Dune City Council to take the current vacant position with the term expiring and the issue.
A second.
Just going to have one? Okay, so the motion on the table is that we appoint Mr. Mallon as our Dune City Councilor to fill the vacant position, it's been seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question, all those in favor signify by saying "aye."
Aye.
Any opposed, say "no." Congratulations, Mr. Mallon, we will, we are prepared to administer the oath for you. Are we, are we? Okay. Want to come forward?
Give me two seconds, I'll get the camera.
Oh, sure.
Call me.
Yeah, call me.
I'll talk to you a little bit.
Well, this doesn't say me, it says you. I'm sorry? This says you and attested by, so is this the right one?
Yes.
Okay.
I made it, so I have to sign it, you know what?
Whoever...
Yes, okay.
I'll redo it on your signature.
Go on up here. Okay, so I think for camera purposes, we're going to have you stand like that, thank you, just be a little bossy, a little closer, okay, so now we want you to, I'm going to ask you to raise your hand, and then I'm going to read a few words and then have you repeat those, okay? All right, just like, you know, in the movies, we do it like that, okay, sorry. I, Tom Mallon, I, Tom Mallon, do solemnly swear...
I, Tom Mallon, do solemnly swear...
That I will uphold, defend the Constitution of the United States of America...
That I will uphold and defend the Constitution of the United States of America...
The Constitution and the laws of the State of Oregon...
The Constitution and the laws of the State of Oregon...
The Charter and the codes of Dune, of the city of Dune City...
The Charter and the codes of the city of Dune City...
And I will faithfully perform the duties...
And I will faithfully perform the duties...
A city councilor to the best of my ability so long as I am in office.
A city councilor of Dune City to the best of my abilities.
For as long as you're in office.
For as long as I'm in office.
Very good, thank you. I think you sign? Well, she's...
I'm going to give it.
Fancy one for you to sign there.
Yeah, I'm going to get a fancy one for you, and your binder is already up there and your sheet's ready.
So you remain...
Move to the dais.
Just in time to do the financial disclosure.
Fine, sorry. Ah, it's fine. Okay. Throw up. Okay, so we have a second seat on Dune, on Mr. Peznell, right? Jamie, how do you make a decision? We have the planning commission now. This one?
Well, not two, because Tom, Tom can no longer serve on the planning commission, so, so yeah, there are two vacancies on the planning commission.
And we have two applicants.
Okay, and then we have two applicants. Well, Mr. Peznell, by default.
Yes, we have two applicants.
Okay, and then Mr. Galbreath.
Mayor read.
And then Mr. Galbreath is also the applicant. Okay, Counselor Sanders?
I make a motion that Ken Peznell be appointed to the planning commission for the term ending in January tenth, twenty nineteen, and Steve Galbreath for the term ending in twelve, thirty-one, twenty sixteen.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, that we appoint these two gentlemen to their, these respective terms as stated. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying "aye."
Aye.
Okay, wow, welcome, everyone.
Can we get Mr. Peznell again on the budget committee?
Yeah, we can.
Mine's what?
Depends on what the meetings are.
Pardon me?
What are the meetings?
The first one is the twenty-third of February, it is to go over our, four o'clock in the afternoon. Is that work for you?
I can't do a Tuesday at four o'clock.
Tues, you can't do a Tuesday at four o'clock?
Tuesdays are my worst day of the week. Tuesdays is my worst day of the week to do anything.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll keep that in mind for future ones.
I just grabbed that out of the hat.
Okay. That's still okay with you, I think?
Can we still appoint to the Budget Committee and get him the materials? Get him up to speed even though he's not going to make the meeting? For the budget process comes out?
Because the budget process will be starting like in April-ish. And if you would perhaps let our city administrator know what days you can't make it, or call me, I can.
Right.
Either way. I'll fix you up. Okay, so we need to appoint him. I'll need to, I'll entertain a motion to appoint Mr. Pezzell to the Budget Committee.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion?
What term is he taking?
Well, he's going to take the term that Tom just vacated. Or he could take, he could take one.
No, we're talking about the budget committee.
Yes. Tom's on it as a councillor, but he's not on it as a city citizen. Yeah, he can't be on it as a citizen member and a council member. So we have that position open and one other. That one, term ends June 30th, 2018.
I like that one.
And the other one ends June 30th, 2016.
Do you have a preference, Mr. Pezzell?
No.
I made my motion to say for the 2018 term.
Okay.
Will the second go along with it?
Who was the second to the motion?
I'll second.
Okay. So the motion on the floor is to appoint Mr. Pezzell to the Budget Committee for a term expiring in 2018. Any further discussion? Hearing done, I'll call for the question. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Okay, filling these right up. Oh, we're happy.
Water Quality? And the Road Commission?
Well, we have triathlon.
We've got.
Wait, wait. I'm sorry, I'm skipping. No more skipping, oh. Okay, so we have a Water Quality Committee that we have an applicant for, Mr. Steve Galbraith for a term ending 1/11/18. And that would be the Water Quality Committee. Since he's not here, we all appoint him. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Moved and seconded that we appoint Mr. Steve Galbraith to the Water Quality Committee with a term ending in 1/11/20, 1/11/2018. Any discussion? Hearing done, I'll call for the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Welcome, Mr. Galbraith. And Road Commission, Mr. Steve Galbraith for a term ending 12th, 31st, 19. I'll entertain a motion.
The mayor, on me?
Mr. Sanders?
Mr. Galbraith is on the Planning Commission and on Water Quality. I really think that's enough demands on this individual's time. In addition, in our goals, we're talking about possibly eliminating committees, except for the Budget Committee and the Planning Commission. I think it might be premature to, for example, going into the Road Commission, we're not as specifically been outlined as go from a road department to a public works department. And in our discussions in the goal-setting session, having a contract, part-time, public works director basically do the function, the lion's share of what the commission does and getting volunteers to go out and do the work. So I don't know if we want to do that or not because of the upcoming change.
Excuse me, but there is no more room on the Planning Commission. You filled those positions tonight.
Well, it's the same man.
It's a road commission.
You did not vote for Mr. Galbraith for the Planning Commission.
I thought we did.
You did. I missed it, okay. Never mind.
I mean, we can do it.
Would there be any thing in our charter that would say, they can't serve on two commissions? I don't remember seeing anything like that, do you guys?
Well, we have the representative of the Planning Commission, Mr. Gargis, that attends the Road Commission meeting. And if Mr. Galbraith is appointed to the Road Commission, also sitting on the Planning Commission, I just don't think that's a good thing to do at this point. You'd have one representative from the Planning Commission.
Okay, all right. So how about if we do this? Since Mr. Galbraith isn't here, is not present this evening, why don't we just, and he certainly can, you know, reapply the next time we appoint a Road Commissioner. So why don't we just table this appointment for this, for this evening and then we'll have a discussion with him about that.
And I'd also like to hear from the Planning Commission how they would feel about having a city member on the commission, also on the Road Commission, when the Planning Commission Chairman attends those meetings.
Are you asking me?
Yes, sir, please.
He can take my place.
Well, we don't know.
I think you're giving a whole lot of responsibility to just a couple of people here sitting back here listening. That's my only comment. Here, this fellow be on three committees. And you got this gentleman here on two major committees. And I think that's, plus he still works. I think that's a lot to ask for.
Do you want to go, sir, thank you? Tableling.
I think I just shot myself in the foot.
You did, thank you. All right.
It's the right thing to do.
All right, it's the right thing to do. Okay, so no. Okay, moving along to unfinished old business, the item D, Oregon Dunes Triathlon and Duathlon, discussion.
It's not on the agenda.
It is on my agenda.
It is on the agenda that was posted and sent out electronically. It is not on the agenda that was in the papers.
It's online, but not yours. So we can't talk about it?
Go to the order.
Okay. Is it on yours?
It's one of those nights.
It's one of those nights. Okay. All right, we're down to committee reports. It's one minute to eight. I don't really have a, you know, anything unusual or magnificent to report this evening. So I will call on Communication Education Committee, which we don't have. And I'll call on Mr. Counselor, Counselor Wells to, for his report regarding the Community Center.
Well, where do I start?
Oh, yeah.
We've got a big screen TV. We're going to be mounting, I understand, on the south wall there because that's where the electric cabling is. It's going to be the easiest application there. We're also in the process of building a bin to put this table, storage tables in.
Behind the TV.
Okay.
We're kind of, kind of putting the mantle thing on hold till we get these other two done. We got to put some more thought into the mantle thing.
Okay.
That's where we're at right now, City Hall. Community Center.
Okay. All right, thank you, Counselor. Counselor Platt's not here. Any report, any, Counselor? Counselor Scarborough?
No parts meeting and none planned unless something comes up that we need to meet.
Counselor Sanders?
The draft minutes kind of say it all. We went over that in extensive detail earlier this evening. The other half of my report in there is the 2016 Blue Mountains Projects on Monday, President's Day. The Road Commission will be meeting here Monday evening. And that'll be one of the major items on that agenda to discuss as we prepare to present to the city administrator the Road Commission's basic budget submission for the upcoming fiscal for maintenance projects. And there's other items in there, but it's pretty well self-explained, I tell you.
Counselor Meyer?
I don't have a Water Quality Report for this month. But we did have a call in earlier in the month about a potential bloom. And that was checked out as per procedure and everything was fine.
Thank you. Thank you for going out on that and keeping us informed. Emergency Services Report from Ms. Mills?
I did not, due to illness, I did not attend the Westland Emergency Operations Group meeting last month, but plan on attending the one scheduled for Monday, February 22nd at 10:00 a.m. Moving on. Well, the report is in the, in your packet, so I don't really need to go into much detail. Couple of important things I think I need to bring out. Where the mayor and I are, will be meeting with individuals regarding the encroachment issue tomorrow.
Oh, that is tomorrow, isn't it?
Yes, it is. At 11:00. Just want to remind you. Lakes Edge has requested and was granted another two weeks' extension. However, all items that were to be returned have been returned. Time to get cracking on the triathlon, which I had hoped would be on the agenda. Perhaps we can discuss it now because I do have some questions. Whatever my questions are that I handed out on the guys. I need answers to these questions. It's getting critical.
Okay. You want to write now?
Let's, let me finish the franchise agreements moving forward. Outlet control structure. We have reached an agreement. We're doing paperwork now.
Oh, yay!
And I think that's about it. Except that I do want to say thank you very much to everybody who submitted surveys for the goal-setting session. It was quite enlightening and actually it was kind of fun to tally them. To say, wow! Anyway, thank you all. And hopefully we'll get more and more and more time to do it. No, I'm good, thank you.
Okay, so for the Good Order, we have discussions regarding triathlon, regarding our triathlon that we need answered. So does the city want to retain ownership of Oregon Dunes Triathlon and Duathlon?
I thought we discussed that during the goal setting.
There was no decision made. It was discussed, but there was no decision. I came away very unclear.
Can we do consensus without taking action?
Well, I would suggest that maybe, yeah, a consensus would help at this point.
Okay, councilors. It's our Oregon Dunes Triathlon and Duathlon. And what, it's just a simple question. Do we retain ownership of the Oregon Dunes Triathlon and Duathlon? Or sell it? Counselor Wells?
I think there's too much here for Good Order myself. I think, we talked about these things at goal-setting, but I mean, there are some pretty big things going on in here.
And let's just read them so everyone kind of has an idea what they are. Does the city want to retain ownership of the Oregon Dunes Triathlon and Duathlon? Do we want a new logo? The old one belongs to Nike and Stacy. Did a new one last year, so it really belongs to her. Okay, so the question is, do we want a new logo? The city, and then number three. The city has never entered into a contract with the current provider, Blair of Best in the West Events. Should I attempt to do one this year or hope for the best? Okay, number four. Do we, if we do a contract for this year, under what terms? I can try to change it. We can keep our own sponsorship. He keeps his. You know, there's lots of details there. Number five, are we going to do merchandising? If so, are we going to change the colors or stay with the biggest seller, which is black? Number six, she spoke to Blair. He's okay with us doing goodie bags to be distributed to the athletes for the, for the community sponsor's prize. No. He's okay with doing goodie bags to be distributed to the athletes for the community sponsor prize, which is $100, I believe.
Right.
So if you want to put something in the goodie bag to give to all the athletes, it will cost you a sponsorship price of $100. And then do we want to move forward on that project? And then number seven, there will be no electrical power at the vendor booth. So do we need electricity for anything? The vendor booth, you mean at the triathlon? I thought we had generators. Counselor Sanders?
Regarding the new logo question, the old logo, the one that's currently on that we've been using was the one that originally we started with. And I was under the impression that we owned that logo.
We did, we, we thought we did. It was a competition and people were encouraged to compete, present, and we awarded this logo to a winner. And last year we discovered that it is Nike's logo in Europe. And so we can't, and it's protected by copyright laws. And so we cannot use that anymore. And that is why Stacy, at the last minute last year, came up with a new logo, which ended up on the T-shirts, which is on the website, which is on the sponsorship packets now. Yeah, I mean, we didn't know. And now we do. So we need to change it. The question is, do we use Stacy's? It's all, it's all tied together. And it is a very important question. Number one is a very important question because it's all tied together. May I suggest that either an ad hoc committee be appointed to come up with some answers to these questions? If you trust an ad hoc committee to do that. Otherwise, we may have to have, I mean, we're running out of time. It's going to be March.
Okay, you have your answer correct. Counselor Scarborough?
I think before we leave here tonight, we need to address number three about the contract. It makes me real nervous having any kind of an event if you don't have a written contract.
Why?
I think we have to have that.
That's tied to question number one.
Yeah.
Question number one.
Because I personally do not want to see the city retain ownership. The idea was not to do that. And secondly, with that being said, yes, we would have to have a contract. You're absolutely correct, Ed. In my opinion, it would have to be for the year. Because I think we have one more year left in the five-year period that ownership. And I think that's what a consensus should be because we've talked about this before.
Right, yeah.
Okay.
And in part of those contract talks, I would like to see us get some of that registration fee money.
Okay.
I think that's a, you know, we got into this whole thing to make money for the city. Didn't work out well last year. I, I think we need to do some negotiations on this. And really, there needs to be a signed contract before that event happens. So we know what's happening and he knows what's happening.
Can we bring this back on the 23rd, maybe a half hour before, half hour before the Budget Committee? Give her the direction she needs in open, open session as this has a action.
Maybe Blair could come down.
Maybe what?
Blair could come down.
Yes, yeah, I talked to him today. He said he would be willing to come there.
Why don't we do it an hour before the Budget Committee starts?
Or an hour after, I mean, or the hour after. The Budget Committee meeting should not be very long at all.
Okay, so it starts at four, so I think three o'clock would be a good time.
Okay.
There's just a lot here.
It is. So we're going to table this too and put, place it in a special meeting prior to the budget meeting on the 23rd of February, which is a Tuesday, at three o'clock in the afternoon. We're going to talk about this. So if you're interested, show up.
Is that enough time for you, Jane?
I would like a decision regarding the goodie bags. If you want to move forward, I need a word of bags.
I think we should just trust your judgment.
Yeah, and the merchandising. Color, give me a color. Do you want to change colors or not? That's the question.
Don't, don't ask me, a man, to choose a color.
Okay, we're all going pink.
All red.
I know you will.
Biggest seller is white, go with white.
Stay with black, okay. Actually, it would save us money in the long run if we stay with black, really. But we do have to redo the logo.
We do have to redo it. And we can't have. We do have to redo it, and we can't have that one that's copyrighted fringed upon.
You mean, what we have are now going to be collector's items?
Yes. Okay, all right. Okay, so this was part of the Good Order. Anything else with the Good Order, Counselor Meyer?
Nope.
Counselor Wells? Counselor Sanders?
Absolutely not.
Okay. Okay, how about you, new counselor? Good of the Order, well, my Good of the Order is welcome to all these folks.
Yeah, thank you.
We have chocolate cake back there, even though there's no birthdays.
All right, very good, so stay tuned for cake. We'll entertain a motion for adjournments. The move, okay, second move. 12 minutes after eight? Yay! See, we tried it.